Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski? Mr. LaScavige?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Nine present.
All right, thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. Anybody for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned and we'll start back up at 6:01. Thank you for having us here this evening to talk to you a little bit about the project. Al asked me to put together some of the notes on the specifics of the project just to understand what we went through to get to where we are today and how that money was utilized. I will say Al took a lot of steam out of my discussion here with the teams and the location, but I did want to mention that this year alone, we have over 230 Little Liggers playing at Chickshinney, which is huge considering that most programs are in decline and have been in decline for many years. We're actually up about 20 people this year, 20 Little League players, which is huge and is great considering where we are in our rural location. Back in about March 2023, we got the notification that we had received a $250,000 ARPA grant from county council, which we were certainly grateful for. We knew we had until July 1st of this year to get that money spent, which is a very short timeframe considering the amount of work that had to be done to get the lights vetted out and figure out how we were going to get them installed. We had about a month and a half to do all the engineering work, to process different vendors who could possibly supply the lighting systems, and also find vendors who could meet Little League requirements, which are pretty stringent, as you can imagine. By the end of June 2023, we actually had the lights on order, so we ended up going with Musco Lighting Systems out of Wisconsin. They make most of the Little League lights that you see. If you go up to Howard J. Lomedy, that's the system that you'll see on that field. A lot of local high schools now have the Musco systems on them as well. The real work began right after the 4th of July, so we all took the 4th of July weekend off. And July 8th, 9th, I think Al may have been over there for this, we started our trenching. So a horde of volunteers, and when I say a horde of volunteers, there's actually about 12 or 13 adult volunteers, and we actually had five players. Five of our Little Liggers came out to help us that day. In that day alone, we trenched 1,000 feet of, we did 1,000 feet of digging, a bunch of volunteers. We installed over 5,000 feet of electrical conduit in that day, so almost a mile of conduit was put underground. Everything was backfilled and sealed up. We wanted to make sure the fields, because they were in use for our fall ball and some of our summer programs, that they were safe for the kids. We had a little break there while we were waiting for the lights to come in. The lights were manufactured out west. They were sent into us. Our lighting package, the first trailer, arrived on August 15th. I remember that day well. They called me and said, hey, we're here about four hours before they were supposed to be, and we were scrambling to get up there to get it unloaded. But our foundations came in. We partnered up with the local contractor who had the necessary equipment to drill the holes, since we were drilling down about 12 feet in the ground, putting in a 36-inch diameter hole, which is a pretty big hole for these foundations. They completed that work in about two weeks for us. So by August 29th, our foundations, our concrete foundations were ready to go. And this is where the fun starts happening. Musco comments to me all the time when they talk to us, they can't believe how quickly we assembled the system on two baseball fields and had it lit. So September 2nd of 2023, we started pulling our wire. When I say pulling wire, we actually pulled in well over 14,000 feet of wire underground for these lights. That's almost three miles of wire pulled in. At that same time, utilized about 240 tons of stone, so that's 12 triaxles of stone that were brought in for us to get the trenches and the pole foundations sealed up. We finished the wire pulling September 2nd and 3rd and set the top field poles. So we set four poles in one day. Actually, I think it was about six hours for us to assemble them and set them. These poles are 60 feet high. They weigh about 2,600 pounds, fully loaded out with all the equipment. So we had a bunch of volunteers there and a crane to set all that. It's pretty neat to see, and I think Mr. Flora was there that morning to see us erect that. And we'll tell you, if you ever need a construction manager for another lighting project, Al said he would volunteer to do that now that you've seen how everything's gone together. So that Saturday and Sunday, September 3rd and 4th, we set the top field. The following weekend, on September 10th, we set the bottom field in about four hours. So within about two weeks, we had our poles off the trucks and up in the air and ready to go. September 10th, I can tell you that's a night I'll remember for the rest of my life. And if I could ask my two assistants or three assistants here, we have a package of a couple photos here, if you don't mind, if we can pass around to council. Go ahead, guys. So September 10th, we finished up the bottom field, got all the wiring and terminations done. And as anxious little kids we were, we wanted to see the lights lit that night. So messages went out saying, come over to the field, 8:30, we're going to turn these on. Let's, fingers crossed, everything works. So September 10th at 8:30, with a bunch of players present that night, we asked them to count us down from five, four, three, two, and one. We hit one and turned the lights on in both fields. So it was a beautiful night that night. It was pretty clear. Lights in the fields lit up beautifully. I don't think there was a dry eye amongst any of the volunteers standing there, and it must have been 30 of us. But the first picture you see in that package is the players, which is what we're going to remember for the rest of our lives. So we had a bunch of T-ballers, softball, minor boys, major boys. All of them went down on the field and played a pickup game of wiffle ball underneath the brand-new lights, just on their own. And we probably stood there for a half hour watching them play this game. I can tell you, like, I still get emotional thinking about it, because what we did that day or what we did that year in that summer was for that reason, to see those kids play that game together and work together. Another amazing first for us was our girls' softball that was put together in 1975, and that field never had lights on it. Five days later, September 15th of 2023, the girls' softball team got to play their first game under the lights out at McKendry Field. I was getting text messages that evening and photos from coaches and parents just saying, thank you for this. The girls are crying on the field that night. That's the first I'd ever played under the lights. So it was a great first for us. For volunteer group, like I said, of about 13 adult volunteers and the five players, we spent well over 1,000 hours, all of it logged, working on this project. So that's a lot of weekends, a lot of time away from home, and some great families. For us, the time from start of the project to completion was just under five months. So I know my Musco people tell me all the time, it's a year, year and a half project for most paid contractors. Still can't believe we did it in under five months. Time from the light delivery to the first power-up was actually 23 days. From the day we got the lights, the time we powered it up was just a little over three weeks. As far as the league itself, significant benefit to us, like Al said, we serve a huge part of the county here, especially in the western part. We had an old lighting system that was well over 25 years. We were looking to spend in the next couple of years probably $30,000 to $40,000 just replacing poles and crossarms. That's a lot for a Little League to try and undertake. The new lights, like I said earlier, meet the stringent requirements of Little League, so we can now host district games and district tournaments. This summer, we're actually going to be hosting the girls' softball district tournaments. So it's going to be a real big event out there. It'll probably be televised on Fox or something like that, they said. So we're looking forward to that. Lighting system itself comes with a full 25-year warranty, so for the next 25 years, league doesn't have to worry about any maintenance on these lights at all. We don't have to pay any money. We can focus on developing our programs, developing the property, and developing the players. Energy savings for us, which, you know, is kind of jaw-dropping when we think about it. We're going to save over $2,000 a year, just our electric bill, switching out the old lights, these new LEDs. Considering before, we only had one field with lights, now I actually light two fields for less money with the LED system. Overall maintenance costs for the 25-year period and electric savings is going to save the league over $70,000, you know, we think in the next 25 years. Lifespan of these lights and poles will probably be 50 to 60 years, so I'm sure the savings will rack up quickly. We made the area safer for our spectators. A lot of folks that came out Friday night were a little unsure about the parking lot area, which was always dark and not well-lit. Some of the areas around the fields were never well-lit. It's now a safe area for egress. Everybody can see where they're going and can see what's happening around the fields. So it's, also, our scheduling's been made a lot easier now with 230-plus players. That's over 21 teams that play two games a week on those fields. So you can imagine trying to schedule 21 teams playing all week long on those fields. We now play an early game and a late game every day so that we can get those teams in and played. And like Al said earlier, we have teams coming from all over the area, from Benton, from Dallas, from Wilkes-Barre, Hanover, Nantacoke, all like to come out and play. But most importantly is, you know, our ability to realize the dream of providing equal facilities to both our girls' softball programs and our boys' programs. That's huge for us, and I know it was a dream of some of the founders of the league to have that done. So we're happy that that can be done right now. We're happy that we have those facilities moving forward so that these kids, not only these kids, but their kids' kids hopefully, can play on those fields and learn the lessons that we learned as Little Liggers. So with that, league has a small presentation to make here. And on behalf of Northwest Area Little League, if I may approach. Would you like to present to council this plaque? Are you asking the award of the ARPA funds to Northwest Area Little League in providing the ability for us to create dreams for the kids of the future? This plaque, I'll get back here. So as I explained Friday night to the folks that were there, that plaque looks a little rough for wear, and there's a reason for that. That's actually a section out of one of our old poles that we took down. So we had that sliced up and made into the plaque, and then obviously our new logo, laser-edged into it. So we thank you for your dedication to the kids, your gift of the ARPA grant to Northwest Area Little League. We hope we're doing it proud and doing it right for everybody out there. So thank you very much, council. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Real quick, I have a question for John. No, you can stay there. We have 11 people on this council, enough for a baseball team. And I was thinking at the end of the regular season, maybe when you get your All-Star team together, we could, all of us are in pretty good playing shape, maybe except for Mr. LaScavige over there, but the rest of us, I think, could still play a little bit.
Absolutely. We love to have you. Thank you very much, and we truly appreciate this, this honor that you've given us. And truly, it was an honor of ours to be able to give that money to worthy projects like yours. And we very much appreciate you coming here and letting us know just how much it affected you, because the work to get that money allocated was not easy work. And, you know, we certainly aren't looking for any, any, any congratulations or thanks, but we do truly appreciate it. So thank you.
And I'll be ready to manage the team. And if you don't have a place to put that, I, all, safekeeping for all of you.
I don't know. Our office doesn't have a lot of pictures on the walls. I think we'll, we'll find a place for it, I think. Thank you, Manager Crocomo.
All right, guys. Play ball.
Yeah, you, you can leave now. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to.
The youngsters might not want to hear the rest.
Yeah, absolutely.
Understandable.
Thanks for coming. Have a great season. All right, guys. Thanks. Thanks. Thanks.
Well, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
On a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, initially, I thought that would be a great idea. And then when I ran it by the Office of Law, Attorney Skeen, they determined, and I think the email came out where he explained that to council, where the Act 13 funds, because they're so restrictive, they, it's kind of difficult sometimes to use them up. And right now, we're sitting on over 500,000 in that account. We get about 250,000 a year, roughly, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less. And right now, we're sitting on about two years' worth there. And in July, about two, two and a half months or less, we're going to get our next allocation, which would bring us up to probably 750,000. And one thing's for sure with these state grant programs, if you don't use them, you lose them. And if they look over three years and see that you're not using the funds, well, we're just not going to get them next time. I, we were going to, as we talked two weeks ago, we were going to use the ARPA funds. And then the more we thought about it, since the narrow restrictions that are allowed for Act 13 funds, we thought, why use up the ARPA funds when they're much more versatile? We could use them for many more, many different projects for the next eight months, because all, all that ARPA money has to be allocated by the end of this year. So that's why we decided, and after consulting with Attorney Skeen and Manager Crocomo, we decided to, you know, that it'd probably be best for the Act 13 funds to be used for this project. That's, that's all my comments.
Okay. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, I brought that for, because actually, if you look at, I served on that Act 13 committee for quite a while, and the very first, under Section G, use of the funds, and thank you, Manager Crocomo, for getting this information, that, it says G number one, remember, this was, this was the Act 13 Marcellus Legacy Fund, so it was really there to mitigate issues caused by the drilling industry, and which we know what happened with the roads in places north of here, but it goes all across the state for people who don't, aren't too familiar with the program. Number one says, "Construction, reconstruction, maintenance, repair of railways, bridges, and public infrastructure." And I know, when I ran, this was the number one issue that I kept on hearing from the people Luzerne County, that the roads and bridges are an absolute mess. Not to necessarily detract from this ask, but I, I just think we've, we've got to be very judicious with these funds. And so that's why I think, I think it would behoove us to meet with that committee and just, you know, really take a second look.
Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a great thought. That was my thought, too, last year when I was, I'm chairman of the Act 13 Committee, and that's what I wanted to do with this money. However, it was determined it's not eligible for the roads and bridges in the county. We have a separate Act 13 road and bridge fund, which is different than this fund. This fund has to be used for all those other limited things, but we can't, am I correct, Manager Crocomo, we cannot use this for roads?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll do a roll call. There's a first and a second.
On the question, Mr. Chair, if I could, can you clarify that, though, Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair of the Act 13, or Manager Crocomo, about the segregation of those funds, because I just don't recall that. Yeah.
When the Act 13 Committee was doing the review, we can't use it actually to do road repairs. We have another fund that is similarly titled that is used for the roads and bridges. But this particular fund is, is used for things like beautification and recreation and, and, you know, things like that. But we can't use the funds to actually repair the roads.
All right. Is that it? Do you have another comment, Mr. Thornton, or?
Well, I think, do we have a listing of all the checking accounts here in our package tonight? I'm not sure. We do?
Yeah.
What item? Work session. Discussion regarding?
Oh, number two.
Oh, page six in the work session packet.
Vice Chair, when you get there, can you tell us what page you're looking at specifically?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for myself. I'm looking for the listing of all checking accounts. Would that be at the end of that massive budget report?
I think it's on page 70.
Page 70?
A jaw dropping when we think about it. We're going to save over $2,000 a year just on our electric bill, switching out the old lights, these new LEDs. And considering before we only had one field with lights, now I actually light two fields for less money with the LED system. Overall maintenance costs for the 25-year period and electric savings is going to save the League over $70,000, you know, we think in the next 25 years. Lifespan of these lights and poles will probably be 50 to 60 years, so I'm sure the savings will rack up quickly. We made the area safer for our spectators. A lot of folks that came out Friday night were a little unsure about the parking lot area, which was always dark and not well lit. Some of the areas around the fields were never well lit. It's now a safe area for egress. Everybody can see where they're going and can see what's happening around the fields. So it's... Also, our scheduling's been made a lot easier now with 230-plus players. That's over 21 teams that play two games a week on those fields. So you can imagine trying to schedule 21 teams playing all week long in those fields. We now play an early game and a late game every day so that we can get those teams in and played. And like Al said earlier, we have teams coming from all over the area, from Benton, from Dallas, from Wilkes-Barre, Hanover, Nanticoke, all like to come out and play. But most importantly is, you know, our ability to realize the dream of providing equal facilities to both our girls' softball programs and our boys' programs. That's huge for us, and I know it was a dream of some of the founders of the League to have that done. So we're happy that that can be done right now. We're happy that we have those facilities moving forward so that these kids, not only these kids, but their kids' kids hopefully, can play on those fields and learn the lessons that we learned as Little Liggers. So with that, the League has a small presentation to make here. And on behalf of Northwest Area Little League, if I may approach.
Would you like to present a council with this plaque? The award of the ARPA funds to Northwest Area Little League in providing the ability for us to create dreams for the kids of the future. This plaque...
So as I explained Friday night to the folks that were there, that plaque looks a little rough for wear, and there's a reason for that. That's actually a section out of one of our old poles that we took down. So we had that sliced up and made into the plaque, and then obviously our new logo, laser etched into it. So we thank you for your dedication to the kids, your gift to the ARPA grant to Northwest Area Little League. We hope we're doing it proud and doing it right for everybody out there. So, thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Real quick, I have a question for John. No, you can stay there. We have 11 people on this council, enough for a baseball team, and I was thinking at the end of the regular season, maybe when you get your All-Star team together, we could... All of us are in pretty good playing shape, maybe except for Mr. LaScavage over there, but the rest of us, I think, could still play a little bit.
Absolutely. We want to have him. Thank you very much, and we truly appreciate this honor that you've given us, and truly, it was an honor of ours to be able to give that money to worthy projects like yours. And we very much appreciate you coming here and letting us know just how much it affected you, because the work to get that money allocated was not easy work. And, you know, we certainly aren't looking for any congratulations or thanks, but we do truly appreciate it, so thank you.
And I'll be ready to manage the team. And if you don't have a place to put that, I... Safekeeping for all of you.
I don't know, our office doesn't have a lot of pictures on the walls. I think we'll find a place for it, I think.
Sure.
Thank you, Manager Crocamo.
Thank you. All right, guys. Play ball.
Yeah, you can leave now. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to.
The youngsters might not want to hear the rest.
They really want to get to practice.
Yeah, absolutely.
Understandable.
Thanks for coming. Have a great season. All right, guys. Thanks. 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 Thanks.
All right, are there any additions or deletions to the voting session agenda?
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I propose that we remand item number five to the Act 13 Committee. I think that'd be a better place to just examine the use of those funds.
If that's a motion, I would second it.
All right.
We can discuss it when we get there if you'd like.
Well, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
On a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, initially, I thought that would be a great idea, and then when I ran it by the Office of Law, Attorney Skeen, they determined, and I think the email came out where he explained that to council, where the Act 13 funds, because they're so restrictive, they... It's kind of difficult sometimes to use them up. And right now, we're sitting on over $500,000 in that account. We get about $250,000 a year, roughly, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less. And right now, we're sitting on about two years' worth there. And in July, about two and a half months or less, we're going to get our next allocation, which would bring us up to probably $750,000. And one thing's for sure with these state grant programs, if you don't use them, you lose them. And if they look over three years and see that you're not using the funds, well, we're just not going to get them next time. We were going to, as we talked two weeks ago, we were going to use the ARPA funds, and then the more we thought about it, since the narrow restrictions that are allowed for Act 13 funds, we thought, why use up the ARPA funds when they're much more versatile? We could use them for many more, many different projects for the next eight months, because all that ARPA money has to be allocated by the end of this year. So that's why we decided, after consulting with Attorney Skeen and Manager Crocamo, we decided to, you know, that it'd probably be best for the Act 13 funds to be used for this project. That's all my comments.
Okay. Mr. Haas?
I brought that for, because actually, if you look at, I served on that Act 13 Committee for quite a while, and the very first, under Section G, use of the funds, and thank you, Manager Crocamo, for getting this information, that says, G number one, remember, this was the Act 13 Marcellus Legacy Fund, so it was really there to mitigate issues caused by the drilling industry, and which we know what happened with the roads in places north of here, but it goes all across the state for people who don't, aren't too familiar with the program. Number one says, "Construction, reconstruction, maintenance, repair of railways, bridges, and public infrastructure." And I know, when I ran, this was the number one issue that I kept on hearing from the people of Luzern County, that the roads and bridges are an absolute mess. Not to necessarily detract from this ask, but I just think we've got to be very judicious with these funds. And so that's why I think it would behoove us to meet with that committee and just, you know, really take a second look.
Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a great thought. That was my thought, too, last year when I was, I'm chairman of the Act 13 Committee, and that's what I wanted to do with this money. However, it was determined it's not eligible for the roads and bridges in the county. We have a separate Act 13 Road and Bridge Fund, which is different than this fund. This fund has to be used for all those other limited things, but we can't... Am I correct, Manager Crocamo, we cannot use this for roads?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll do roll call. There's a first and a second.
On the question, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Oh, go ahead.
Can you clarify that, though, Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair of the Act 13, or Manager Crocamo, about the segregation of those funds? Because I just don't recall that.
When the Act 13 Committee was doing the review, we can't use it actually to do road repairs. We have another fund that is similarly titled that is used for the roads and bridges. But this particular fund is used for things like beautification and recreation and, you know, things like that. But we can't use the funds to actually repair the roads.
All right. Is that it? Do you have another comment, Mr. Thornton?
Well, I think, do we have a listing of all the checking accounts here in our package tonight? I'm not sure. We do?
Yeah.
What item? The work session. Discussion regarding...
Oh, number two.
Oh, page six in the work session packet.
Vice Chair, when you get there, can you tell us what page you're looking at specifically?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for myself. I'm looking for the listing of all checking accounts. Would that be at the end of that massive budget report?
Is that on the budget report? Yeah, after that, can't see it. You don't have to.
I think it's on page 70.
Page 70?
Yeah, page 70.
I'm getting there.
Yep. It's 206.
As I remember seeing it last meeting.
It's 205 and 206.
205 and 206, yeah. And, yeah, 205 is the Act 13 Bridge Fund, and 206 is the Act 13 Marcellus Shale Fund. So you see, the bridge fund is $1.1 million, and the Marcellus Shale Fund, which is the fund we're discussing here tonight, is $506,000.
All right, any other questions? Go to Mr. Sabatino.
I would just like to say that I think we should refer back to the Act 13 Committee. That way, we can get all the stakeholders in a room and hammer out like a long, like a lease agreement of some sort, so that way, we know that once we pave the parking lot, that the community would be able to use it for the foreseeable future. You know, maybe ask the Diocese of Scranton and Exeter Borough to hammer out some sort of lease agreement.
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton, then Ms. Smith.
Yeah. We discussed that, I discussed that briefly with the chairman and I think with Attorney Skeen. The issue with that is, to put covenants like that into ownership of land, we... It's kind of hard to enforce down the road, years down the road, if someone else buys that property and they're a private owner. And we would have had, in my opinion, and I discussed this with Mr. LaScavage today, we would have had to done that with all that ARPA money we gave out. We gave a lot of ARPA money out to dozens and dozens of entities, and we can't control them from this point forward. At the time that we made the grant, it was deemed appropriate. But if they decide a year from now or two years from now that entity sells, then we can't control who they're selling it to or what kind of covenants we'd want to put on them if it's a new private ownership. Very difficult to control property and land like that. So initially, I thought it was a great idea, and I wished it was an easy way to do it, but it'd probably be a challenge, and we'd end up in court someday over those kind of covenants. But that's why I wasn't leaning going that way.
All right, Ms. Smith, and then Mr. LaScavage.
Chair Lombardo, just before I make my comment, would you prefer that we save this till when we get... I realize we're asking to strike it.
Yeah.
But perhaps, striking it is not the best. Perhaps we should have this discussion when we get to it on the agenda.
I agree.
Just for organizational purposes, before I say what I have to say.
Yeah.
Do you want to wait until we get there?
That's what I would prefer, but if council would like to have the discussion now, then...
It might make more sense.
I think we should wait until we actually get to the item, if that's okay. So we do have a motion and a second. Let's just do a roll call on...
I'd rescind my second then.
You'll rescind yours? Okay, all right, is there, so is there a second to refer this back? All right, fails for lack of a second. Okay, any other deletions from the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt? Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second? I don't know who the motion was. Was it Greg? It was Mr. Wilovich? Okay.
One moment, Chair. I'm sorry. Is this to adopt the agenda for the work session as well, or just the voting session?
Voting session.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. We'll not have public comment on voting session agenda items only. We have one slip. Mr. Griffith?
Good evening, council. Is this working? Okay, it's on. Good evening, council. Item number five was the item that I wanted to speak about as well, and I have similar concerns for the council. And I know the gentlemen from the Diocese were here last week with the work session to give us an idea and a discussion about what they plan, and I think it's a worthwhile project. But council has bylaws that they're supposed to be following as far as what the structure of committees, and it's not only on this one, it's on multiple committees. The Administrative Code Committee hasn't met in over two and a half years. We have a bunch of committees that haven't met. The purpose of that structure back in the day was so that the committees had a chance to vet all this information and bring their recommendations to council either at a work session or at a voting session. And I certainly understand that we're at a point now where we want to try and approve this funding for that, and it's a worthwhile project, but I think we have the cart before the horse on the whole discussion. It should be done by the committee. So you get ample answers to your questions. Number nine is the issue that I have on the awarding of American Rescue Plan modification for the Sewer Authority. The Sewer Authority was granted this $2 million in March of last year. That's over, March of last year was over a year ago. Now they come to council and say they want to extend the deadline to December 31st of 2025, which gives them a whole year to spend the money in order, so we don't have to turn it back. The concern I have is the Sanitary Authority is in charge of the stormwater fee, and that's what this project's for. The residents of this county don't have the luxury to not pay their sewer bill. If they don't pay their sewer bill, the Sanitary Authority levies a 10% fine on them, plus they put a lien against their property. They have now come to this council and said, hey, you gave us $2 million that we can't spend because we're not ready, and it's okay, just give us an extension. But they won't give the residents of this county an extension when they're late on their sewer fee or on their stormwater fee. I think it's disingenuous for this council to grant them an extension. They're not forthcoming. They didn't come to a work session to say why they needed $2 million extension. Nothing. They just come in and say, hey, we're not ready. You had a whole year to get ready. We have projects like the Little League that was just here said, we had to jump through all kinds of hoops to meet the deadline. They worked diligently, night and day, to get those lights up so they didn't miss the deadline. And then you have a big project like the Sewer Authority that just wants to put a rainwater forest in over $40 for it, and they come in, eh, well, you know what, we're not ready. We want a $2 million extension. Pull the money away, give it to somebody who's shovel-ready, and use it for something worthwhile in this county. They got that money first with the Flood Authority and everybody else. There's no reason in the world why they're not ready. Or at least come to this council and tell you why they're not ready, not just ask for an extension. I think the $2 million should be taken away from them, or charge them a 10% penalty for not being ready. $200,000 comes back to the county, because that's what they charge the county residents. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom?
No.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll move on to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 9, 2024 voting session?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number one, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzern County for the DA gun violence.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number two, motion to adopt the resolution providing tax exemption for new construction in deteriorated areas under the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act.
So moved, Wilovich.
So motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaScavage.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
I expressed one small concern a couple days ago to our Office of Law. Attorney Skeen responded back to me. The way the resolution reads, it doesn't mention anything about the other recreational programs that are using that area, subject area in Exeter Borough. So, you know...
Mr. Thornton, you're, that's, this is for number five. You're talking about number five, I suspect, for the Exeter, for the parking lot, correct? This is for the LURDA.
You are correct.
That's okay.
Jury, ignore those comments.
All right. All right, there's a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'd like to make amendment to that, if I could, Mr. Chair.
All right.
So if you look at page, and this is page 44, right? We're on page 44 with this revised schedule. And we've had past discussions about this, and that being said, I just think for any rehabilitation project, I see the value in this. However, again, it is a tax abatement program. If the property cannot be developed within a 10-year window, it probably lacks a lot of merit. And again, notwithstanding, I understand the needs of that particular place, but I would propose, that being said, and the other debates we've had here in recent council meetings, if we could delete years one through five, so that would be the abatements of 90, 90, 80, and 80, and shift years six through 10, make that the new years one through five. So year one would be 70% abatement, year two would be 60%, year three 50%, year four would be 40% abatement, and year five would be 30, and then have 0% abatement for the remainder. I think that's a good compromise to get that property going.
So your amendment is to change the LURDA schedule?
Correct.
To basically, year six through 10 is year one through five, and there's no six through 10?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second on that? All right, motion fails for lack of a second. There's a motion and a second on the original resolution. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith? I have thought about this, and I really find that this speaks to the... These microphones are tricky. We'll get it one day. I really find it speaks to the point of LURDA. This property has not been developed that I can remember in my entire lifetime. I don't think that we're likely to see it developed without some sort of help. So while I generally am not a fan of LURDAs, I do find this is in the spirit of what LURDA is supposed to be doing. So I'll vote yes. Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Seven yes, three no.
All right, thank you. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzern County and Chicxulnáboro for the premises located at 35 West Union Street, Chicxulnáboro, Pennsylvania.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the use of interest earned on American Rescue Plan Act funds for mold remediation project in the main courthouse.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
May I interrupt, just as a point of information? We did late Friday get approval from Booth Management that we can actually use ARPA funding, and I would recommend that we use the ARPA funding because it qualifies, save the interest for a project that wouldn't qualify under the regular ARPA. So if someone can make that amendment, I think that would be very prudent.
Okay. Somebody want to make that amendment? Mr. Thornton?
I'd like to make that amendment. I'd like to make a motion to change the wording of that resolution, and it would read as follows. "Motion to adopt resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for mold remediation project in the main courthouse."
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, motion and a second. Roll call on the amendment.
I have a point of just a question before we move on.
Oh, go ahead.
I believe it was brought up by this council, asking to check in on whether or not our insurance policy may cover part of this. I understand that this is an emergency. It is an emergency, and it cannot wait. So if we can't, if we don't have the answer yet, perhaps we can look into that answer before we actually make the payment, or maybe we do have an answer.
Ms. Sparage can answer that, I'm sure.
We can, we did report this to the insurance. However, it has to be, the mold has to be related to a previous insurance claim that was filed, and it would be capped at $25,000. So I'm going to say off the cuff, I think it would be a stretch. It has been reported. If we were able to do that, we could, you know, take that money back. But like I said, it's capped, and we must show that this mold is related to a previous claim.
And even if we go beyond the insurance cap, we could just pay that and then submit the $25,000 to the insurance.
Yes, yes, and just as a matter of course, so that council is aware, Ms. Sparage, we do make claims like this to our insurance company. The payment by the insurance company would stem from the contractual obligation of the policy. So even if we use the ARPA funds to remediate this, if the insurance company does accept coverage, then we would have the $25,000, or if we can show that they're two separate events, potentially a cap of 50.
So as long as we are not cutting off, and it would be bound, obviously, by the policy. So this vote would not cut off the possibility that we may be able to save that $25,000.
It would not.
Okay, and I trust that we would look into that.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Thank you very much.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the amendment? All right, roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous on the amendment.
All right, now on to the amended resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is, was there already a motion and a second? I apologize. Okay, roll call on the original resolution.
On the question, though, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
We can't have mold, and we have to have our judges in the chambers, of course. But I want to use this opportunity to encourage our, our delegation in Harrisburg, and the entire General Assembly and State Senate, that our court system is vastly underfunded by the state. Vastly. And we brought this up ten years ago. There's been no action, actually anything, they actually decreased our allotment a few years ago. So I would like them to take up this mantle on our behalf, and I hope this goes out. And it wouldn't cover a cost like this is, this is something unforeseen, but one hundred and seventy grand is a lot of money for us. And we keep on going back to our local taxpayers, and there are, there's significant court cases that have shown that the state needs to act and really needs to, to get on this. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time, but again, I hope that doesn't come back void like it has for ten years.
Ms. Smith?
I, I agree with Councilman Haas. I do think that one of the issues is going to stem from the fact that this is our building. It's not running of the courts. Perhaps we can talk to the legislature, legislature about helping to fund the, the ongoings of the court. If we have to move things, if, if there are costs incurred with that in the interim. But I don't think that the courts are going to be covered in the fact that this is our building. And that's the problem, the mold's in our building. Mold's not just in the courts, as much as we might like it to be. It's not. So I don't think that that would help, but perhaps we can look into any costs caused by the movement of court out of those particular courtrooms.
All right, thank you.
It's not the courtrooms, because that's safe, it's just chambers.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the chambers.
I don't.
And there is no safety risk?
No safety risk.
Regular court can go on fine, there is no safety risk.
Correct.
Right.
All right, thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, number five, motion to adopt the resolution awarding Luzerne County Recreation and Conservation Fund grant money to the Diocese of Scranton.
So moved.
There's a motion? Second? Roll call?
On the question?
Go ahead.
Do you want to speak first?
No, go ahead.
Because I think you had some good things to say, but she, she was going to say something beforehand.
Ms. Smith?
I, I have a hunch that both Mr. Haas and I are getting at the same thing. I do believe that we, the correct procedure here would to have, would be to have this request go to the Act thirteen committee. As I do know that those funds from the Marcella Shale, not the Bridges and Roads funds, this is separate, like we discussed earlier. I do, I do know that there are a lot of hurdles to jump when using those funds, but I also know that we have a good amount of money built up in that account for this purpose, hopefully. But I do think procedurally, the best way for this to happen is to send this question, is to hold on this particular issue right now. Send this question to the Act thirteen committee, allow them to do their investigation, call all the stakeholders to the table. Because a big worry that I have spoken to people about, and I've spoken to my other council members about, is that it's possible that we fix this parking lot expecting that they will allow us this easement, for lack of a better term, over it to access the P B football leagues, the, allow us to use it for the Veterans Day parade. But it's very possible that this land is sold in the next two years. And now we have put up this money to fix this parking lot, which is a significant amount of money. Prior to COVID, it was half of the cost. That's why they've come to us. The worry is that they will sell it out from underneath us, and the new owner will not allow us to utilize the parking lot in the same way. And I submit that the reason it's before this council, and the reason this council is truly considering it, is because of the amount of community use the parking lot currently gets. But that does not guarantee that any future owner would allow the same. And it doesn't guarantee that the Diocese of Scranton doesn't sell the property in the next five years. We would have all these questions answered if we procedurally went through the Act thirteen committee first, got all these questions answered, they were able to speak to all the stakeholders and people involved, and then brought this question to the council. So we would be more informed and be able to have a more intelligent conversation when it came to this. Because there are real risks here. I see real benefits, but I also see real risks. So I am asking that this council consider tabling this particular question and sending this to the Act thirteen committee, which then would allow us to utilize our committees, as was mentioned, so many of them do not meet now. This is exactly what the committees were set up to do. And it would allow us to utilize our committees that have been underutilized in the correct way, in a reasonable way. In a way that other people, that people of Luzerne County may be able to come to that meeting and voice their own concerns in a way that would get more to the bottom of the problem, or the bottom of the issue than an entire council meeting. So I'll let discussion happen, but I will probably be making a motion to table this question here and make a motion to send it to Act thirteen. I don't have to make that motion at this moment, I'm interested in the rest of the discussion.
All right, Mr. Haas and then Mr. Lescavage.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate my colleagues in the control group that said as well. And we're, we're bringing that back with this, this new council, utilizing the committees. But I, I sat on that Act thirteen committee for years, and that was, how we handled that was a mini ARPA process. We had, anybody who's interested, they actually had to apply for those funds, and we, we actually took them as they came. So it's the same exact format, obviously without the contract or that's due in the ARPA. And we just want to make sure that, that it's open to everybody. And it's a half a million dollars, it's an awful lot of money. And so if, if we take that route, we don't, we don't have to just quickly, you know, expend these funds. I appreciate Milla Crocomo talking about, you know, looking for a different pot of money to fund these things. I really appreciate the leadership there, but that wasn't on last week's workday agenda. Now here we are, we're forced to vote on it now. So I think that, that also right there in, in validates what we're going on right now. We didn't get a chance to really discuss this prior. And so I would too, I would hope we would amend this back to the Act thirteen committee. Let's do it right, and again, make it totally transparent.
Uh, Mr. Lescavage?
So I served with Mr. Thornton on the Act thirteen committee. The old system was broken, we figured that out. The old system, they gave applications out for parks, recreation, things of that nature. In looking back, a lot of the projects were never followed up to see if they were ever finished. There was money doled out left and right for good causes, but we to this day, from projects as far back as two thousand sixteen, do not know if they were ever completed. So with that being said, if this came before me on Act thirteen, which we didn't have a meeting in a little while, but there is also an issue with space here and availability and time, we all know that when you're trying to get a meeting, I would still approve this project. And on the basis of what ifs, we could sit here for twenty years on what ifs. What if we gave a million dollars to the J C C and they redid a property through ARPA, which we did, and they sold it two years from now? Are we going to go back and get money from them? Absolutely not. We gave, I think of John, what is it, about a million dollars to the Pitts and Ambulants for the new facilities?
Two million.
Two million. Great cause. I don't know a person that walks the sidewalk that wouldn't be in favor of that. But we don't know what five years brings from now. It could be that guy Singer got sold and comes in with a new group and drops their drawers on pricing for ambulance service. And the next thing you know, they could be forced out of business. We don't know. If I knew the answer to that, I'd play Powerball tomorrow and I can guarantee I wouldn't be sitting here. But with that being said, we can operate as a council to move this county forward and be, my goal is to move this county forward and be at least in the top five, if not the top three. And I do, I think we do that by growth, being smart in what we do, and, and looking at all angles. And I don't think we're looking at all angles here because we can operate on what ifs. Thank you.
Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just to dovetail a little bit on what he, Mr. Lescavage just said. If, if we're going to take this kind of deep scrutiny with the Act thirteen funding, I, I could tell you, as one who, the last two, almost two and a half years sat on the Act thirteen committee, it, it's been a royal mess, what was done in the past with the Act thirteen funds. It, it's a mess. We, we can't get the boroughs and municipalities to comply, to get back to us, to do the reporting they were supposed to do. They all took the first half of the money, some of them took the second half. There's no resolution, there's no closure. We don't have an extra staff to hire here in the county to go around to all these municipalities and try to clawback that money. It's an administrative nightmare. And as long as I'm on the committee, I'll never go that route again, giving two thousand there, three thousand, four thousand. Some of the projects, I understand, were, you know, ten thousand dollars, and we said, we'll just give them four or five, and hopefully they'll come up with the rest. Ill, ill thought, didn't work out well at all. Now, the other thing I want to say is, ARPA funds are under much deeper scrutiny. Every penny is going to be audited by the federal government of this ARPA money, every penny. If we're going to hold this high standard of scrutiny to the Act thirteen funds, why aren't we holding it with the ARPA funds? I mean, we, we doled all that money out, like Mr. Lescavage said, we have no idea what's going to happen a year or two from now with that money. And that money is under more careful scrutiny by the, the state than the Act thirteen funds. I want to remind everybody out here in the, in the meeting room and in Zoom land, Act thirteen funds, there's not a penny of Luzerne County taxpayer money being used for this. Act thirteen funds do not come from Luzerne County residents. As a matter of fact, not a penny of state taxpayer money, or federal taxpayer money. There is no taxpayer money in the Act thirteen funds. Where does it come from? It comes from the fracking companies, the, the companies that are extracting the gas from the earth. And it's based on how much gas they extract, how much business they do, and they pay a fee to do that business. They pay a fee to the state. The state simply acts as a, a pass-through entity, and they pass the money back to the counties. So there's no taxpayer funds being used for this project. Regarding the Act thirteen meetings, we had one about a month and a half ago, I think, or two months ago. Myself, Ms. McDermott, Mr. Lescavage. We set up a meeting, was good for everybody, and then a few days later, a week later, somebody couldn't make it. So we had to postpone the meeting and reschedule it. And then somebody couldn't make that one. We had to reschedule, we had to reschedule four times. And, and one time the room wasn't available, we thought it was, it wasn't available. It, it was extremely hard to get all three people here on an odd night like that. And, and, and I think just to go down that road again would take a long time, and, and it'd just come before this council again some night. The fact that it was on the agenda since, I believe, Thursday, the clerk of council advertised it Thursday, it's been on the agenda, and I, I think the public could have shown up tonight, or even before the meeting and commented on this. I could tell you, all the Act thirteen meetings I've been at, nobody shows up from the public, nobody calls in. We just don't get anybody coming to us, I guess, because it's not taxpayer money. But for those reasons, I think it's perfectly fine to proceed tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thornton, and I generally support this as well. I believe that this is a perfect example of community members coming to Luzerne County when they need assistance, and us just trying to be good stewards of the community. So I think this is a, a great project. Ms. Smith?
Briefly, I agree with you, Chair, I think it's a good project too. However, I am simply, I am certainly not suggesting that we return to procedures that we found didn't work. I'm just saying there's probably different procedures that might work, and I'm also not contending, Councilman Lescavage, that we are wizards. But there is a difference between an intelligent vote and an uninformed vote. Two thousand dollars is a major difference from three hundred thousand dollars. There is a difference between an intelligent vote and an uninformed one. And I just believe the Act thirteen committee is in the position to allow us to make an intelligent vote.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, listen, I have a question.
Ms. Haas?
I'm going to speak, thanks. Yeah, I, I agree with both of what you gentlemen said, there's, you said a lot of good things there, I agree with a lot of that. However, the, the issue here is that we need to have deliberation on these things. I get it, we, we signed up, we got elected, yeah, it's going to take some time, and sometimes it's hard to get together. We just had strategic initiatives, I mean, the other night, we, we had, we didn't have a quorum, all right? That happens sometimes.
The first one, we did.
The first one, we did. But with this, the original Act thirteen committee, it was a lot of work, we did a lot of things, and then one council member came up and, after we did all that work and said, well, let's just divide up everybody. And I said at that time, it was a terrible idea, to your point, Mr. Thornton, terrible idea. And you're right, a lot of, there wasn't enough money to do any of the projects. And I said at that time, this is a bad idea, the committee put a lot of time in, just like you do. And I value everybody's time here, here on council and outside of council, at our committees, because that's where the burrow meets the road, and that's what the people hired us to do. Is sit here and deliberate, and get feedback, and ask the hard questions, and ask when you, like I did. So I, I didn't realize we have two separate funds. I would, I'm still not quite satisfied about the, the legacy fund here just for beautification. I'd like to see where that says in the state, I would like, really like to see where that's coming from, how we accrue that over time. And I, I don't have that information here. I'm with Ms. Brin Smith, I think we should just table this, let's do it right, let's do it transparent and clean, and everybody can, can rest for this good project.
Mr. Sabatino?
To answer what Mr. Thornton said, I would, I think this is a great project, I would love to do it, but we are not doing this for the community. The bottom line is, we're doing this for the Diocese of Scranton. You know, like, we have no guarantee, and, and I am not a wizard either, we have no guarantee that after they pave this parking lot, that they're not going to sell it and put a McDonald's there. You know, and that, it gives me a little bit of pause to use this money. If we were giving this money to Exeter Borough, and they were going to pave the parking lot for the recreation use, nobody would have an issue with this. Thank you.
Any other comments? There's a motion and a second?
I, I'd make the motion.
Motion to?
Table this.
All right, there's a
And send it to the Act thirteen committee.
There's a motion to table and send to Act thirteen. There's a second.
Second, that motion.
Roll call on tabling.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
We have four yeses and six nos, it is not tabled.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the original resolution?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
On the original resolution, I discussed some concern I had with the way the resolution read, and Attorney Skeen was very gracious to get back to me. My concern was, when you read the resolution, it appears that this money is solely going to be used for a parking lot for a church. And there was no mention in here of all the other entities that we discussed two weeks ago and again here tonight. So I propose that we amend this resolution to include another whereas clause at the end of it, before it's, it reads be it resolved. As per Attorney Skeen's recommendation, the amended clause would read, quote, whereas, this would provide desperately needed parking for an area which is routinely utilized by the community for recreational purposes, including the Exeter Little League, the Panthers Mini Football League, cheerleading competitions, and parades, including the Veterans Day Parade and recognition ceremony for our military veterans, unquote. I'd make that motion, will you amend it?
And that
I would second that, as it at least lets them know our intention as to why we're doing this, except for this, it should be this funding, not just this. If we say this, we don't know what we're talking about, this is not a noun.
So this?
This funding.
Is that
Okay, I'll, I, I agree to that, so my motion should read everything as I read it, except instead of the word this, it should probably, it should read this particular funding.
And this will come after the last whereas, whereas county council, or before it?
No, after, it'd be the last whereas, before the be it resolved.
Second to that, so is it before the last whereas, or after it? Okay, it'll be before, it'll be in between county council's final approval authority and county council wishes to award. So it'll be in between those two, Ms. Lawrence, okay? And Mr. Thornton has the specific language with the addition from Ms. Smith. All right, there's a, is there, okay, there was a motion, is there, and there was a sec, Ms. Smith, you seconded that?
I did.
Okay, all right, motion.
With the change in the wording.
Right, okay. There's a motion and a second, roll call on the amendment?
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the amended resolution. Roll call.
Well, it was on the original, so we just need to reinforce that they're still good, now that it's amended, right?
Yes.
We have a first of Mr. Wilovich and a second for Mr. Lescavage. Do you still stand?
All right, there's a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
This vote has nothing to do with what worthwhile I think the project is, I just think this is being done procedurally incorrectly. I think this project is extremely worthwhile, and I'd love to see it happen for those kids and for our veterans, so yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
We have nine yeses and one no, it passes.
Okay, thank you. Number six, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for a building and grounds Department HVAC system replacement project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? On the question, Mr. Lescavage? Go ahead.
So this project, I, I believe it won up about four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and I guess part of the project in discussions was grossly underestimated. I, I think it would be important for us to reach out to Train, because there was kind of a mix-up with some items that were purchased outside of the scope. I think we need to pressure them a little bit, because I don't think, that's a thirty percent increase, you know? And the excuse that thirty percent increase should happen just over us buying two products by the way that normally comes through them seems to be quite a penalty. And I, and I myself would be more than happy to call them directly, if I'm given that number.
I mean, we can do that, but, what we found out was that previous, previously, we went through a middleman and a third party, which actually bought the equipment from Train. And we, we would have been better off dealing directly with Train. I have Nick Vog here, he can give you more particulars and where we're at. But if you want us to go renegotiate, we will do that.
And, Mr. Vog, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the understanding was there was two items out of the three, correct, that were purchased?
Two, two pieces of equipment, yes.
Yeah. So, but ultimately, they would have still came through?
Correct.
So I, I would just like an opportunity to go back to them and say, listen, you know, five percent, ten tops, thirty, like, it's unacceptable.
Just one note, time is of the essence here too. It's a twelve to eighteen month turnaround time, and this project needs to be done by twelve thirty-one twenty-six. So if we're going to do this ASAP, if possible.
I mean, if, if you provide me with a number tomorrow, I, I I mean, if you provide me with a number tomorrow, I will call them tomorrow.
Sure can.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
So in light of that, I'm just thinking, it is a lot of money. Maybe we should think about tabling it, and then we'd come back here in two weeks and vote on a new number. Or maybe they keep the same number, and we could vote accordingly at that time. So.
We'll make the attempt.
So I'd make a motion that tonight, we just table this motion.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second to table, number six. Roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lascavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
I'm going to vote no. I think this project, the time is of the essence and needs to get done.
It's nine to one. It's tabled.
Okay. All right. Number seven, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Back Mountain Recreation Incorporated.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Mr. Wilovich and Ms. Smith, go ahead.
No, I wanted to go back to the last one. As I am, as I was on the winning side, I can, I can make a motion for a reconsideration. All I'd like to know from Mr. Vog is whether or not that amount of time, as time is of the essence, whether or not that amount of time puts his project back substantially too far. I mean, obviously, we'll put it on hold for a little while. It's only two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks is fine, but anything beyond that, I get a little anxious, so. Okay. Two weeks is okay.
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 Thank you.
All right. That's a little more.
Then my issue with that number is resolved.
Oh, it'll be, right. It'll be three weeks between now and the next meeting, actually. But if, yeah, that's, that's okay? Yes. Okay. All right. The goal here is midsummer, get this going. Sure. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. So there's a motion and a second on number seven. Roll call.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lascavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number eight, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Butler Township. So moved. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lascavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number nine, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority.
Motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I, I'll make a second, and then before we proceed, I have comments.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Thornton, your comments?
Yeah. I agree with our controller, Walter Griffith, that this is a pretty heavy lift, a pretty big ask. I think they are asking for an extension to December, the very last day of 2025, December 31st of 2025, which is eight and 20 months from now, more than a year and a half. And also, because of that date, and I could probably get clarification from Ms. Parich in the room, but I think that kind of handcuffs us and prevents us from reallocating that money to another project. I think in the past, all these other projects, that we.
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Parich, can you?
I just want to finish my point.
Okay.
With all other projects and extensions, we've been diligent in that we're trying to leave ourselves some leeway and room to reallocate funds if the entity can't get the project completed in time. In this particular project, if for any reason, 20 months down the road, it doesn't get done accordingly, we have to give that money back to the federal government, I believe. Could you clarify that?
What would happen is anything, any funds, as they stand committed in those categories as of 12/31/24, that's where they have to stay. So I don't know off the top of my head. Yours may be stormwater. If they couldn't spend all the $2 million, if they don't spend $100,000 when it comes to 12/31/24, council could still use that money, but it would have to be for a stormwater project.
So you mentioned two dates. You mentioned December 31st of '24, eight months from now. And then you mentioned 12 months later, December 31st. Could you clarify those again for me, those two dates?
12/31/24 is when all of our money has to be expended.
Earmarked.
I'm sorry, earmarked. Earmarked. I apologize. It's been a long day. So as of 12/31/24, all the money has to be earmarked. How that money is earmarked in those categories, the eligible categories, that we cannot move categories after 12/31/24. So if it was allocated to stormwater, it has to stay in a stormwater project. I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there, we have a representative, too, from the sanitary authority that can speak to this a little bit?
Sure. Jeff Colletta, Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. I'm in charge of the Stormwater Division. One of the reasons we asked for the December 31st, 2025 date is because we were told by Booth that we could only ask for one extension in this. We're probably three to four weeks from going to bid on this project. It's been held up because of the reviews by DEP. And as you know, this is also part of the Flood Protection Authority property. So this is part of the dike system, this project. So it has to be reviewed by the Army Corps of Engineers. So that took over a year. So that's, that's one of the main reasons that we've been waiting so long. This project will be done, most likely, by the middle of next year. But that's why we asked for the date of December 31st, 2025, because we were told by Booth that we could only ask for one extension. So, you know, taking, you never know what's going to happen in construction. So, you know, we asked for the later date. But this should be going to bid within the next, I'd say, three to four weeks. We should have construction started in late summer of this summer and hopefully have this done, you know, depending on the winter weather, probably around January or February. So this project is going to get done. I don't think you have to worry about reallocation. Also, I just want to let you know is, we spoke to Booth prior to signing the agreement. We thought that we would not make the date that, you know, was, was in the paperwork. And they told us that not to worry about it, that we should come back to council for a, you know, extension. So this was kind of known upfront. We know how long these, the reason that these take so long is because DEP and EPA has to do an extensive review of these projects. It's not something that you can just, you know, engineer and then just go to construction. These need extensive DEP and EPA and Army Corps of Engineer review.
Thank you. Mr. Lascavage? And then Mr. Thornton.
I think what was, you know, what he just spoke about here, and I understand all of that. I just would like to see us maybe with a six-month extension so that we're not wrapped up and committed. I would like to see something happen before the end of this year, that that money is just laying there.
Is that something that, I mean, you did say the project is going to bid in.
I would, I would ask, I would, I respectfully ask for maybe nine months instead of, instead of the 18.
Then how about we give you October 31st?
October 31st of?
This year.
No. There's no way we could be done by then.
Well.
Go ahead.
As I understand it, Mr. Colletta, you said you were waiting about a year for the Army Corps of Engineers, which is a federal.
Correct.
Entity. And to your point, the majority of our extensions that we have discussed and granted here are due to permitting, DEP and DOT permitting. And in this case, we have a federal entity which takes a lot longer. It's the federal.
They move at their own pace, Mr. Vice Chairman.
So, I mean, instead of December 31st of '25, heck, I don't even know if I'll be around. Would it, would it be acceptable to back that up somewhat?
Yeah. I'm more than willing to say that.
Maybe June 30th?
I'm, I'm.
Of 2025?
I'm good with that. If you're, if you, I'm willing to agree to that if you are willing to agree to that.
Okay. So.
Now, mind you, the construction has to be complete by that date. So that's, you know, that's, you know, giving us a little bit of cushion if there's any construction issues.
Okay.
Is that, yeah, would you like to make an amendment to that? Are there any other comments before we go any further on this? Is that, okay, so you'd like to make an amendment?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion. It's motion number nine, I think.
Yes. Resolution.
The resolution number nine on the agenda to amend the extension date backwards from December 31st of 2025 to June 30th of 2025.
All right. There's a motion and a second on the amendment to move the, Mr. Sabatino, to move the date to June 30th of 2025. Roll call.
On the amendment, Mr. Lascavage?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, on the amendment.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. The amendment is passed. There's a motion and a second on the amended resolution. Is everyone still okay with their motion and a second? Who were they?
Mr. Wilovich and Mr. Thornton.
Okay. You're both okay with that, with the amendment? All right. There's a motion and a second. Roll call on the, on the resolution.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. Lascavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Nine yeses, one no. Passes.
Thank you, council. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. Number 10, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for NEPA-inclusive, which is now called PA-inclusive.
Oops, I'm sorry.
So moved?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All right. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Just to clarify, this is only for an extension of time, not a change in the amount of money? Correct? I think.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lascavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 11, introduction of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024 budget for Luzerne County courts. That's automatically introduced?
Yes, I'm introducing this amendment to the budget, the 2024 budget, to utilize funds in the amount of $163,000. They originally were allocated in the 2023 capital fund to complete repairs to the courtrooms. That money was not used, and we would like to include it as a carryover.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right. Number 12, introduction of ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024 budget for Luzerne County for licensing.
Excuse me.
You have any comments? Manager Croco, sorry.
I'm introducing another amendment to the budget. This budget amendment is for the 440 Fund. There are no general fund monies in this fund, but it was not entered into the 2024 budget. So we would like to do that.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on that? All right. Public comment? We have one slip.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Don't we have to take a vote on that? It takes four council votes to introduce, correct? Just point of order?
If the manager is introducing, it is automatically introduced.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Public comment?
Non-agenda item. I have a question about the old juvenile detention center that we were in a hurry to sell. Couple of years back, probably four years ago, there was a big rush. Had to sell this prison, had to sell this prison. This guy wants to buy this prison. We sold it four years ago, and there hasn't been nothing done to that. If we could possibly get an update for the, maybe the next meeting for the general public to know whether this guy who's gonna, who purchased the property to steal, by the way. He came in and he had to have an amendment. Some members of council were here. He came in and he had a problem with a sewer line or something, and we had to change the sale price because he had to have this building, and we had to change the allocation for the sewer line, and we changed it. There's been, I don't think there's been anything done to that building since he purchased it. He was supposed, had these great and wonderful things he was gonna do with that building. I don't see anything being done, so if we could get an update on that, that would be helpful. Tomorrow's election day, as we all know, and the Bureau of Elections has been working their butts off getting that thing ready. We all need to just give them a little bit of credit for that hard work. It's a huge task. In fact, on my way over here tonight, I saw Steve Han had the back of his car loaded with things that he was bringing in in his own personal vehicle to the upstairs to get ready for elections tomorrow and all kinds of stuff that they were just hauling in, him and Emily, the two of them. And so they're working hard, trying to make elections go as best they can. Hopefully, we'll have no problems tomorrow. Fingers crossed, and everything is good in the world. Hopefully, we'll have a good election tomorrow. We won't have any problems, but key tomorrow for the people of this county is the Government Study Commission. And I just want the people of this county to understand how important that question really is. We have a government that works really well right now, under home rule. To change that to anything other than a home rule would be a big disaster, and I know that would be their study commission's recommendation, and it won't happen unless the people vote on it. But clearly, we have problems in the charter that we need to make sure we have the right seven people that are interested in fixing problems in this county and the charter. And that's key. A government study commission's only half the battle. The other half of the battle is making sure that people who get elected to that commission actually know what their task is at hand. And from somebody who was there, that's a big task. So hopefully, the people of this county will be very educated on who they put on that commission, and if they vote correctly on the question, and will move this government in a forward fashion over the past 12 years. We've done great things. We've lowered the debt by 300 million. Council's been working hard on making sure policies and procedures are working. We don't want to destroy any of that. We want to keep moving forward, and I think that's, that's all we can ask for from a study commission at this point. So I just want to give a kudos to the Bureau of Elections for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment? In the audience? Anybody on the Zoom? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion second, all in favor? Opposed? Meetings? Meeting is adjourned at 7:21, we'll restart at 7:30.
Recording stopped.
All right, counsel, we're gonna get started here in a minute. All right, counsel, it's 7:33 PM. I'll call the work session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Recording in progress.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski? Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino? Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Eight present.
Okay, thank you. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I make a motion to delete work session for the strategic initiative. That's from the Strategic Initiatives Committee, and we did have a, we had one meeting where we had a quorum, and then we didn't have a quorum our last meeting. So right now, it just is a little spread out. I think it'd be better if we were able to present our document with all of our committee members having had input and in a more streamlined way.
Yeah, and I second that motion. I want to practice what I preach, and we'll move it through that committee.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number four is removed. Anything else? Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is adopted. Number one, we will have discussion regarding the resolution approving an agreement with Delta Airport Consultants.
Yes. I'm very excited about this.
Oh, okay, all right. And planning services at the Wiltshire Wyoming Valley Airport. That's great.
I really am. We, this project is something I think that is really going to change not only the area where the Wyoming Valley Airport is, but the whole county. We're going to have our own local airport, and it's going to be top-notch. And so we have, went through the RFQ process. There was an interview committee, and the overwhelming consultants that came out of this committee were the Delta Airport Consultants. I'm going to turn this over to Michelle Sparage, who knows more about airports than I think she ever thought she would. Michelle?
Yes. Good evening. We have recommended, the committee recommended Delta Airport Consultants for this project, and we have Catherine Conlin with Delta. She's gonna do a brief overview of their services, but the committee overwhelmingly recommended this group, and the, there's not a set fee. This will be a master agreement. And then because we get money from the Bureau of Aviation through PennDOT, each task order will have an agreement. So there's not going to be a set fee per se for this, just in case that was anybody's, you know, on your question list. But there was a fee schedule attached, and the reason why those costs are broken down with the hourly rate and the benefits is because that's how the Bureau of Aviation wants to see those costs. So I'm gonna turn it over to Catherine, and then if you have any questions, you know, we can answer those.
And just so counsel is aware, the Bureau of Aviation has been working closely with us throughout this project, and I do want to publicly thank them. They're doing a tremendous job and really, really assisting with us. And the agreements were vetted through the Office of Law as well.
All right.
Well, hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Like I said, I'm Catherine Conlin, and I'm with Delta Airport Consultants. And I'm here to talk to you guys just basically about who we are and why we're excited to be your consultants.
Go ahead, next slide.
So yeah, a little about Delta.
Go ahead.
Airport consulting and engineering is all we do. So a lot of times, airport engineers are a big conglomerate, and you have people that specialize in sewer within it, in airports, but that's not us. We are about 75 people, and we live and breathe airports. You thought you were excited about airports, you should come to one of our meetings.
Tell me when.
Yeah, you're welcome. But our, our quote in our company is, we're aviation enthusiasts who plan, design, and understand airports. So first and foremost, we love airplanes, we love flying. That's what makes us so passionate about what we do. So we just celebrated our 45th anniversary. I haven't been there that whole time, but we have been in the industry for that long, and we work closely with PennDOT at a lot of different airports in that area, and with the FAA and in different states around there, so. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Our services are, like I said, planning and engineering is our bread and butter. That's, I'm an engineer, project manager, and so that's what I do. But we also have people on our team that do environmental work. We have people that can help out with business and bringing in new clients to your airport, things like that, special projects. And then also construction administration, because if I design the most beautiful project, it means nothing unless it's built correctly. So we help you guys do that, too. Go ahead. We are also very involved within the industry. So I call them the ABC Committees, because everyone's an abbreviation, you can't keep them straight. But we have board members on a whole bunch of different things. This is an example of an ACRP, which is the Airport Cooperative Research Program Report. And there are well over 150, almost 200 of these reports, and you would probably be extremely bored reading them, but we choose to help write them. We're not the only company, but different companies within the industry all across the nation. The FAA will come to us and ask if we can help and put these together. And so this is actually the guidance we follow when we design airports. So this is one that we worked on a while ago, and it's for general aviation facility planning. So we literally wrote the book on what we're gonna do for your airport. We have offices mostly on the East Coast. We do go into the Southwest a little bit. Our headquarters is in Richmond, Virginia. We do have an office, your local office would be in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. I work remote in Redding, Pennsylvania, so I'm not too far, less than two hour drive from you guys. Go ahead. And then within Pennsylvania, these are some of our current clients. So if you want to call them out, ask them how they like Delta, you are free to do so if you.
We did.
You did? Good. They say good things, yeah. Pocono's by you, Grand Canyon or Wellsboro is what they used to be called, they're all by you. So we work with them, but that's also to show that it's not just the airports we work with. The people in the BOA that work with those airports are the ones that also work with you. So I know we've been talking about our FAA person, Anna Ellis, and I've met her a few times. I'm working with her on other projects, so it's gonna be a seamless transition to work with you guys. So a little about our team. This is me, my name's Catherine Conlin, and I have seven years in the airport engineering business. I am an engineer by trade. I went to the University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign. ILL? No one? Okay. I am a registered professional engineer in a handful of states, and I would be serving as the project manager, and I do some of the nitty-gritty design work, too, in CAD, and I make the plans and the specs. Also on our team is Dave Jones. He couldn't be here today, but he is the principal in charge. He has 37 years' experience, most of that at Delta. He is a guru, and if you want to nerd out about him with planes, that's your man. Not only is he a professional engineer, but he's also a pilot. So at Delta, we have a handful of people that are current pilots and even more that have been in the past or at least gone to ground school. He flies probably one of the most. He types a Baron in the Harrisburg area. So we already said he's gonna test out your runway once we get the go-ahead, come in, check out your airport. He would be happy to do that. This is Adam Switzer, he's another one of our project managers out of the Harrisburg office. There's me, and there's Dave, and we're great, but we always like to have another person get a set of eyes on any project, anything that we put out to you guys. So he's our designated QAQC for this particular airport. He'll know a great deal about your stuff, so if we have any questions that need a second opinion, he's our guy for that.
Lehigh University, I see.
Yep, he's a local. Yeah? It's a good one. Yeah, he's a local, he's Lehigh. And then next up is Mary Ashburn. Mary Ashburn is our planning and environmental guru. Before engineers get to get into the nitty-gritty of design work, it needs to go through a long process of planning, environmental review. You know, we gotta make sure we don't chop down the trees when the bats are in them, all that good stuff. And she is our expert on that. So she'll be on the team to help get things through the planning phase, and she has a bunch of great certified planner certifications and, again, a lot of years at Delta and in the industry. And those are just for the people that'll be on your team. Like I said, we have 75 people within our, within our firm, and we have, we call them specialized experts or in their field. So we have people that are really good at geotech. Russ Aspern's up there, and you'll probably never meet him, but I guarantee you I'll call him about this dirt under your runway at least five times a year. We have other experts like that on construction, on phasing. There's a ton of years of experience at Delta that every time I think I found a new situation, turns out someone's been through it at least three times. So that slide said customer service, and as an engineering firm, we have a couple of corny jokes that run around, and one of them is, what are the three tenants of Delta in its customer service, customer service, customer service? Which is great news for you guys, because you're the customer or the client. So we bend over backwards to help you guys. Nothing makes us happier than seeing our clients happy. So a couple of ways we do that is through. through project administration. We're not just here to do the engineering work. We're here to do everything else. That includes bidding assistance, coordination, meetings, council meetings like this. We do all the project documentation, anything that we can help out with you guys, help you administrate the grants, because we know that could be a process, we are here for you. So, like I said, for grant administration, if you guys aren't aware, the airport's funding in Pennsylvania is through a block grant state, so it's a little bit different than some of the other states. But in order to get that money, there's obviously hoops that you need to jump through, and things that need to be done in advance, and orders to follow, and we have navigated that process a long time, and we hope to make it easy-peasy for you so that you can get as much funding as you qualify for, and that we can use that all as best we can. And then, we are just also here to support your team. We are always a call away, and if I happen to be out, there's a dozen other people on the phone tree that you can talk to. We want to know everything about your airport. We like to visit. We like to get boots on the ground. We can, people that have been doing this a lot longer than me can look at an airport and come up with, you know, 50 projects that it can benefit from, just because they have that perspective, especially if they're one of our pilots. Things that I wouldn't see, they can see, and we have strategic thinking that we can help out with that, and as well as relationships, not with the, just with the FAA, like I mentioned, but also contractors in the area, subconsultants, geotech, electricians, anything with that. So, for your airport, I know you guys have generously allocated $6 million for the airport, which is amazing, and I wish so many other people would realize what an asset an airport can be to a community, and give that kind of money. So, I know with those projects, you guys are looking to just update the airport, make it a place to be a destination, hopefully bring in some new businesses to the area by getting some new hangars, updating your old ones. I know we have a turf runway that we would like to maybe get away from and have a parallel taxiway. So, everything like that, and once we're selected, we can help, you know, dig up these projects, see where they are, and make a plan for them to see them get put into place. So, that's your current ALP. ALP, I'm sorry, is an airport layout plan. So, when I talked about Mary Ashburn and her planning department, this was from your previous consultant, but anything that needs to be done needs to be on this plan, and it needs to be done well in advance of actually coming up with funding. So, we're going to have a planning session as early as this spring. They moved them up. They used to be in the summer, but they're hopefully late spring, to make a plan for what we're going to do with your airport. What projects can we get done? What order? How much they cost? We'll put them together for you on an ACIP, which is another fun acronym, but it just means Airport Capital Improvement Plan. So, there's my contact information. If you want to get ahold of me, I also have cards if anybody's interested. But I'm just wondering if you guys have any questions for me or for Delta?
Any questions from Council members? Ms. Thornton?
Yeah, I just want to make comment and thank you for your presentation, and I've been involved with this with the county administration for well over a year now. And I just, for the edification of the public, I want to reiterate, or emphasize, rather, all the benefits to this airport. It's been decades since the county allocated any money there. There's many improvements sorely needed. There's things there that are not in compliance with the FAA and safety-wise and everything else, and we're trying to improve that. The hangar itself historically is significant. I think it was built in 1926. It's, two years it'll be 100 years old, and that's that big old hangar you see right off Wyoming Valley when you go by. The purpose here is to, in addition to improving the runways, the lighting, and the safety, and fueling area and all that, it's to tear down all those old hangars, which are falling down, they're rusted, they're too small for today's planes. And what we got from the Scribola family, they run Valley Aviation. They operate our airport for us. They routinely receive requests from pilots and companies that come, and they say, you know what? We'd be here a lot more often if we could park our plane somewhere. That's why we don't fly here. So, there's an end game here. It's not just, a lot of people think it's a recreational airport. You see planes go up, planes come down. There's the liflight program. Two to three medevac helicopters land there every week to fuel up and take off and go back to the hospitals. They come in from all over the region, outside our region, and they come to our 44th Airport, or Luzerne County Airport, rather than go up to a Voca, because the red tape and bureaucracy is a lot bigger up there. They have to wait an hour, sometimes two hours, to fuel up. Here, they come, they land, they fuel up, and they get out of here. So, they, the pilots themselves like coming here, and that's a big service that our county here is serving to the people that, you know, liflights are people that are critically injured or ill that need to get somewhere real fast. So, we're going to be a part of that. Also, a lot of people don't know, that aviation school trains about 40 or 50, 40 to 50, new people coming in, learning to be pilots. They're doing pilot training, and one thing we learned during COVID, there's a huge shortage of pilots in America, and our very own county airport is training a lot of these people every year to become full pilots. We actually have an agreement, or aviation does there. They have an agreement with Marywood University, and Marywood has a program, aviation up there, and they send their students here to receive their pilot training. So, there's an awful lot of good to be had out of that airport. It's actually, it's a hidden gem, a diamond in the rough, so to speak, but it could boost our local economy tremendously if, when these projects are completed. So, thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Any other comments by Council members? All right.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
University of Illinois, fighting in Linei?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're Penn State territory.
I was going to say.
Sorry. I try.
Accurate. All right. Moving on, number two, receive and discuss the budget reports. Ms. Rozelle?
Hi, good evening. You should have all of your March reports in your packet. The first report that you have is the revenue report. Revenue earned is at 17% of budget, or $28,210,000. Last month, we were at 4%. So, I had talked about the tax collections last month, and how they would be ramping up in March and April. The discount period again ended April 15th, so you can see in the month of March, we definitely collected quite a bit of, quite a bit of the tax revenue, as we anticipated. The expenses are at 16%, or $24,267,000, very closely aligned with the revenue collection percentage at this point. Next is the accounts payable report, also running at about 16% for March. The treasurer's report shows $152 million cash balance at the end of March. Cash balance at the end of February was $151 million. So, you may say, like, well, you had all these tax collections. Why didn't the cash balance go up higher? But that's because, remember, we paid off the TRAN, so that was $11.5 million. So, that's, the tax collections are offsetting that. The ARPA cash balance is at $63,879. The interest earned for the month of March is $473,000. Of that, $292,000 of it is ARPA interest alone. The ARPA interest that we've earned so far for 2024 is $908,000. And the ARPA interest earned in total is about $5 million. So, you know, we're doing really well on the interest side. The report that Sharon just distributed is the Budget Transfer Listing Report, which was the new report that Councilman Haas requested last time. So, I apologize that you didn't have that before now, but you have that report now, and you can see there's only a few budget transfers that have been added. There are five of them. So, like, when you saw a lot in the beginning, that was because, you know, people were using up their budget for 2023, so you had some, a higher number of budget transfers then. So, you're going to see that really drop off now. You shouldn't see too many going forward until we get towards the end of the year. When I presented the budget reports last month, Councilman Haas had a question about one of the accounts. It was the Pliget accounts. The HGF account has about $700,000 in it. HGF stands for Housing Trust Fund. So, this fund is actually managed by Community Development. For 2024, they do have a plan to spend those funds. They have five initiatives or programs that they're planning to use the funds for. They are the Home Buyer Counseling Program, the Mortgage Delinquency Program, Growing Home Ownership Program, Rental Housing, and Habitat for Community. The Budget and Finance Staff, you know, we're still currently working with Baker Tilly on the 2023 audit. They actually started field work last week, so things are going very well so far. We now are on weekly calls to make sure everything stays on track. So, does anyone have any questions for me on any of the reports? Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Sabatino, and then Mr. Thornton. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. With Baker Tilly being at the end of their contract, have we put out an RFP for somebody new to come in before Baker Tilly leaves?
We haven't yet, but we will be.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, Ms. Rozelle, the only item on here that I have a question on, the 2024 TRAN stands at $11.5 million. I understand, you know, that's money we borrowed, but we're earning interest on that somewhere.
Right. So, when we borrow money, or when we, when we get the TRAN, we create an account that says, you know, like, it's a TRAN for 2024. So, that's why you see those titles on those accounts. So, you'll still see money in an account titled 2023, because that's what we have to do. When we create the account, we have to label it, you know, something meaningful like that.
Right.
That doesn't necessarily mean that that's the account we're going to take the money out of, as we need to expend funds, though, because we're going to take the money out of whatever account is paying the lowest interest rate at that point in time. So, right now, we're going to keep as much of that $11.5 million in that particular bank account as we can, because we're getting a higher interest rate on that. So, even though it says 2024 TRAN, like, that's how the money initially got into that account, that's not necessarily, you know, how it's going to be used now, though. We just, you know, we want to make sure that we're using the money that pays the lowest interest rate.
Okay, thank you for that. But I also was wondering, since we are paying interest on that TRAN loan?
We're not. We paid it off.
Oh, the TRAN is paid off?
The TRAN was paid off, yeah. It was paid off at the end of March.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rozelle. All right, number three, discussion regarding the resolution authorizing Luzerne County to enter into an agility agreement with PennDOT District Four.
We have embarked on a path to try to work with both the state and municipalities to help lower our costs and use our resources more efficiently, and this is one of them. Vince?
So, this program is designed that we would come into an agreement with PennDOT, and any projects that are done out on the highway or along the roadways, or any of the roadways that the state and the county own, that may intersect or be in the same area, this agreement would help us work with PennDOT. So, say if we have crews in Mountain Top, working on roadway projects and doing certain road cuttings and pothole patching, if we need more help in the back mountain, like up towards Harvey's Lake or that area, we could ask PennDOT to help us out if they're going to be in that area also, so that we get two projects done at once, and we work together. So, that's basically how the agility program, as long as we become a partner with PennDOT, they will help us during all these projects that we have going on. So, we could keep the roads pothole-free. We could keep the roads trimmed back from the overgrowth of all the trees and weeds. It's hard for us to get everything done just out of our department. So, being in a partnership with PennDOT, it would help us tremendously.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. And there's other municipalities in the county that do this. That's correct?
Yes. As a matter of fact, Mayor Lombardo talked to me about it.
Yeah, Pitts and City does it, and it's very successful.
And it's a dollar-for-dollar match.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Public comment. Mr. Griffith, do you have something, public comment for here? Because you have something checked off. Okay.
Just briefly on the work session, public comment. First of all, I don't believe that in all the years that I've been coming to council meetings, we've ever paid a TRAN off at the end of March. So, kudos to the Budget and Finance Department and their leadership with the administration to get that paid off. There's $11 million, you know, and we're getting interest on that $11 million now. So, that's, that's really good for us, that we paid that off early. Last year, I don't think we paid it off until the end of April, if I remember correctly, and that was because I think Councilman Thornton even asked a question about it, and then it was handled. So, kudos to the administration for getting that, taking care of it. Saves us a lot of money. The Delta presentation was very enlightening. Mr. Haas backed many, many years ago, said that the airport was a gem that we didn't want to sell. At one point, I remember council discussing getting rid of the Wyoming Valley Airport, and Mr. Haas, who was a council member at the time, said he's not in favor of that, because it's a, it's a hidden gem, much to Mr. Thornton's point, and it has proven to be just that. And when I did the audit, when I came in as the controller, and we identified some of the issues, and I brought them to council, one of the things that Mr. Thornton and Mr. Lescavage said was, we need to use some ARPA money to fix that airport, because it's money that we got from the federal government. Let's use it for something good. So, that presentation is very, very enlightening, to see that we're actually going to fix that airport up, as that one hangar is almost 100 years old. The Scriboles have been working on a shoestring budget to try and keep that airport going, with the pilot training and all the other things based on the audit that we performed. He's done a great job of putting in hangars and keeping hangars up, and we need hangars. We need a lot of that stuff. So, good job for council to allocate ARPA funds for something that the county taxpayers will enjoy. I know we gave money out to other projects, but that's something that I think the county taxpayers will really enjoy, in 44th area, an actual airport that's actually working, bringing people in, revenue, they'll shop here, they'll go to the, to different things, different functions, and we'll realize some of the revenue from that. So, that's good for us to do that. And lastly, on the council, we actually did the, I think Mr. Lombardo was on the ABC Committee, and appointed an actual airport advisory board that has actually stuck together. We have not had that in years. We now have an actual board that meets, almost monthly, I think, over at the 44 Municipal Building, and they discuss things that have to be done at that airport. And those guys have worked hard at that. They brought recommendations to council, or members of council, and we're working to make that airport work really well. That's a good positive step. We've never had an active advisory board. That was one of the things that was in my audit report, was the advisory board. We had no oversight on that airport. Now, we have pretty good oversight. We have active members going to the meetings. We have ARPA fund coming in there. I'm looking forward to seeing the day when hopefully we'll all be around to cut the ribbon on that whole airport project and make that a real gem for the 44th Airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else? Public comment in the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Motion? Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
With respect to all the poll workers, we're going to have a very hard day tomorrow, and a long day. So, we appreciate them and our staff that's going to run a flawless election.
Absolutely. All right, motion and a second. All in favor? All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, and good luck to all the candidates tomorrow.